All right, well, I'll call the order of the December 10th 2020 business meeting and ask the county administrator Gary Schmidt to please take the role.
Thank you Chair. First, our staff support today Christina Twilliger clerk to the board, Stephen Madcor County Council, he's in the attendees list, but he's here, so he'll be in here shortly. And then Rich Marvin and Garrett Teague from Public and Government Affairs helping with the recording today. Role call Chair Bernard.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Commissioner Humberston.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher is on her way. Commissioner Schrader is at a National Association of Counties Symposium for Large Urban County Caucuses and will not be at today's meeting.
And I assume that's virtual?
That's virtual for Commissioner Schrader, yes.
Okay. All right, please join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We are holding this meeting virtually. If you've joined us on a Zoom app for this meeting and you are interested in providing public comment, we'll prompt you regarding how to do that when the time is right. You will have the option of providing your comments to us live, or alternatively, you can email us at bcc@clackamas.us. Be sure to include your name and the area from which you live. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to you Gary.
Thank you Chair. We'll begin with wildfire updates with Nancy Bush, Director of Disaster Management and Incident Commander of the Emergency Operations Center. Please go ahead Nancy.
All right, thank you and good morning Commissioners. So just a few things to update you on on the Wildland Fire. As I mentioned on Tuesday, the individual assistance program has closed, so I won't be doing a lot of updates on those numbers, maybe the dollar amounts, but those numbers will stay the same at this point. But just to remind everyone, we have requests for public assistance in our FEMA grant portal. We have 13 here in Clackamas County, which includes our cities, school districts, water districts, et cetera, and including Clackamas County. And that was as of December 7th, there's still time to get that in if you need to. We still have estimated properties with wildfire damage at 110, and we have 62 residences that have been damaged or destroyed. And we also have in some sheltering with social services right now, our five families here in Clackamas County due to the Wildland Fires. Just a few other things for some of the capacity building and planning and for economic development, I just wanted to mention that our Clackamas Workforce Partnership has received some federal funding through the state to work directly with public agencies such as public schools, our city and county parks, recreational departments, and the county itself to employ some individuals that could help with some cleanup or repair. And it includes labor that can be put onsite with, as long as there's supervision, they have the right tools, equipment, et cetera. So we're working with them right now to see how that can best serve our county. And, you know, hopefully steering a lot of people toward the repair piece, since of course cleaning up debris is pretty technical as well. We also continue to work with ODOT on our IGA, which we did get on Monday. We're turning in some of the comments that we have for that IGA today. We're finishing that up hopefully this morning so we can get that in. So yeah, our county councils worked on that pretty diligently. There's just a couple of things we want to make sure that are very clear in the IGA, so we'll be sending that in. And hopefully the work can begin pretty quickly after we get that signed. From what we can tell, they would like for all of the counties that are going to have PPDR, which is personal property debris removal, as well as tree removal, which is the public assistance piece. They want all of the counties to sign the same IGA. So we'll be hopefully working that next week and getting it signed hopefully in the next week. And that is my brief update on Wildland Fire.
Any questions? I'm trying to get the participant screen up, but my screen's so small, I can't find it.
Chair Bernard, there's no hands.
All right, no hands. All right. Thank you Gary.
Thank you. Next, thank you Nancy. The next COVID-19 update, we have Philip Mason-Joyner, our county Public Health Director and Coincident Commander of our Emergency Operations Center. Please go ahead Philip.
Thank you Gary and good morning Commissioners. Christina, as always, if you can share the slideshow. Okay. Appreciate the opportunity to provide an update on COVID-19. Our weekly case count data is displayed here. For the first time in a long time, we did have less cases in the last reporting period, so we are very appreciative of that. And we will, it's really too early to make a whole lot of sense of that. We will see in the coming weeks what this really ends up looking like. But we did yesterday or today have under 100 cases for the first time in quite a while. So I know that the public health team is very excited about that in terms of the amount of cases being reported and contact tracing work that we're doing. Next slide please. Here are the metrics to display. They've become a lot more simplified now. This is both for schools being able to provide in-person instruction and also for reopening businesses. So not a lot of changes this week. The case count is still very high. We are still in the extreme risk category for businesses and schools are still expected to be in comprehensive distance learning mode for now. Next slide please. I would say in general, we still have not seen the impacts from Thanksgiving gatherings. We expect to see it in still the coming days and weeks. We're still thinking that because of this being holiday season and winter, that our case counts we're anticipating will still continue to match up with projections being high. Hospitalizations are still at an all-time high over the past three weeks. We're meeting frequently with our hospital partners to monitor bed capacity. And that is something that is still a top priority and something we're concerned about. No changes on that front. I really appreciate kind of this framing and I have a few new visuals and data to share. This shows our case breakdown by age group. And you can see that our younger, our younger 20-year-olds, 30-year-olds, folks in their teens really are driving our case increases. And while these individuals may not be at risk for severe illness or hospitalization or death from COVID-19, the concern is that they impact other people who are at higher risk, folks in their lives that do have a much higher possibility of complications from COVID-19. This is Clackamas County specific information on our cases to date. Next slide please. We, you know, you'll often see that someone has died from COVID-19 and also had underlying health conditions. So this just shows you for Clackamas County specifically, the different types of underlying health conditions that we receive data on. If you're, you know, a person who has cardiovascular disease, they're five times more likely to be hospitalized than the rest of the cases. If you're someone with chronic liver disease, you're four times more likely to be hospitalized. If you are someone who is classified as obese, you're 2.6 times more likely. And if you are a current smoker or were a former smoker, you're 2.5 times more likely to be hospitalized. Next slide please. It's been communicated out widely in Clackamas County. Similar to the state of Oregon and to the country, we do see that our people of color living in the community do disproportionately contract COVID-19. In Clackamas County, about 15% of our population identifies as a person of color, and that comprises about 45% of our cases of COVID-19. We spend a lot of time working with our partners around the Hispanics, our Latinx population. You know, a lot of these individuals are essential workers, working in farm, working grocery stores, working in our long-term care facilities. So making sure that these work sites have access to testing, that we're working with partners that are culturally responsive to meet these communities needs have been a big focus for us. This is the surface area map. I believe Dr. President shared this last week. It shows you just the different proportions that you can see visually in terms of the different outbreaks that we have. And I don't know, I know Commissioner Fisher had a question earlier this week, just about why do we still have outbreaks in schools? Daycare seems to be getting a little bit larger over time. And so for schools, I'll just say that outbreaks take quite a while to close. If you have one case and then they become linked to each other, it takes a while before really that is contained and folks have, all the folks connected to that initial case have completed their quarantine and isolation. Also, while our schools are doing distance learning, there's still activity happening at schools. There's still limited in-person instruction for individuals with special needs or that need additional support. We still have teachers and other professionals that are working in schools. So if they're working in a school, that counts towards a school outbreak as well. Next slide please. Here are the metrics again, just displayed in the way that we've usually been sharing this information. Test positivity is something of interest. And the next slide shows you a little bit more information about testing that we think is pretty important. You can just see, this is the state of Oregon data, so 171,000 tests per week right now. Test positivity with that increase is going up, which is a good indication of looking just at folks that are symptomatic and the demand for testing right now. Right now in Clackamas County, we are, we're seeing about 20,000 to 22,000 tests per week in late November, early December. And compared to spring and summer, we were seeing just about 7,000 to 10,000 tests. So we've certainly increased access, but we also are seeing a lot more people needing testing. Folks that have been potentially exposed are folks who are symptomatic and their healthcare provider is encouraging them to get tested. And my final message for folks, you know, the holiday season is still upon us. And we often get asked, you know, what is the guidance? This is, the guidance really doesn't change. Keeping your distance, limiting your social interactions, wearing your face covering, those are all such important tools. But we also understand the behavioral and mental wellness that folks have, the need to connect and their traditions to keep those alive, and that this is really hard for friends and families, especially this time of year that you want to be connected. I understand, we get that. So my guidance in general would be to really focus on what are those most important things to you this season. Focus, focus on picking, you know, that one activity that you want to do as a group to really dedicate yourself to limiting your risk so that you can do that safely, to really reduce your exposure the week before, the week after, monitor your symptoms really, really closely. You certainly do not want to risk the gift of a pretty nasty and potentially deadly virus during the times that you are going to get together this holiday season if you choose to do so. And before we go to questions, I know Nancy wanted to give a really short update on some of the support that we're providing to businesses. So Nancy, if you want to share that first, well then we can open up for questions.
All right, thank you Philip. Yeah, so I just wanted to update the board on the, it was about $4.1 million that we got from the governor's office for businesses. And we found out that it is actually CARES dollars, which means we have to spend that 4.1 million by December 30th. So we met yesterday, Lori Zittner and her staff of course are working on this very diligently because we really want to get this out to our communities and want to have to do it obviously quickly. So we have to use some things that are in place in order to do that. So I wanted to update you today on what we're looking at. And Administrator Schmidt has also been a part of these conversations. And we will have to get things signed very quickly, which we will work through our county administrator to get that done. So there were 811 business applications and 125 childcare applications that we recently received in, when we sent everything out, which I believe was at the beginning of December, I think. My days are running together. But we don't have enough funds to fund all of those applicants that are eligible. So we are going to take part of that $4 million and make those individuals, you know, we get those businesses, the dollars that they applied for and that they are eligible for. So that will take quite a chunk of the dollars that we're looking at. And then after we get that done, we are going to do a very simplified self-certified application for hospitality, hospitality and personal services businesses. And that will be $2,500 to $3,000 flat amount. So we're still working on how much that's going to be. Our thoughts around that were, you know, it's like this is going to be restaurants, salons, those types of things that, you know, we're hoping that we can give them enough that they can at least pay, for example, a month's rent. Because we know that that has been really difficult for businesses. So we really would like to do something that's, you know, more creative that, you know, we've heard people, it's like, well, can we do something like Multnomah County or Washington County did? We simply don't have time for that. Again, Multnomah County and Washington County got, and Portland got money upfront where we did not. So we have been very limited in how creative we could be with the dollars. But we think that this is a very fair way to get more of these dollars out to our businesses and also help, you know, that gap that, you know, we had so many that applied and we just didn't have enough dollars to do that to go ahead and get those dollars out for those particular businesses as well. So Philip and I will open it up for questions now.
So Ken and then Paul?
Just one quick question. I was wondering on our PGA if we're doing any kind of social, aggressive social media outreach to that cohort of people in the 20s and 30s that apparently are the, you know, the ones that are carrying it to others. And see if we can maybe slow that down a bit. Since that seems to be the least responsible cohort at the moment.
Yeah. Philip, do you want to take that one?
Yeah, in terms of behavior change within those age groups, it's a challenge for our communication staff to work through that. They are partnering regionally and with Multnomah and Washington County and the state. There have been some firms that have been hired to help bring communications, I believe is one of them, really trying to do creative communications efforts around that population. And I would say, you know, certainly learning from some of our universities in the state about how they're trying to help message and communicate with those populations, that's been helpful. Yes, we are pushing out messaging. There's certainly more, I think, that we need to do.
In addition, I'm sorry, in addition to that, too, the quiz that Sue Hildick talked about either last week or the week before is also from just Clackamas County is targeted toward that age group as well.
Okay, so are they using things like TikTok and Instagram and some of the others that a lot of young people use?
We are definitely on Instagram, I know that.
Okay, thank you.
Paul?
Yeah Philip, could you go back to the slide or slides that you had with regarding age propensity for illness related stuff?
Christina, I'll look to you to put that up please.
There we go. Okay, so in this slide, and then Christina, the next, the following slide. So on this slide, my question was, people, is this, is this chart basically health propensity for health issues in general or specifically related to COVID?
This is specifically related to COVID.
Okay, all right. Could you go to the slide of the testing? It's the following one or two after this on the testing, the graph. There we go, that one. So I think that a lot of people that are data minded, that derive, you know, information from data and base decisions on data, you know, look at a number of things. And there's certainly on this COVID thing on the OHA website and other places, a wealth of information sometimes gets confusing. So, you know, I think the argument a lot of people will make when they look at a chart like this and look at the dates, you know, we've basically doubled testing here since, you know, what, September, October, right? Is that fair?
Yeah, we definitely increased testing.
Yeah, yeah, which is a good thing. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not critical of that. But it's, it's hard really to gauge folks, or it's hard for folks to gauge a relationship because people made the relationship, the more testing you do, the more positives you'll have, you know. And I think you can, you know, you could argue that that's statistically probably true. And I know that our numbers didn't go up, you know, whether it's, whether you say it's doubled or tripled amount of testing, that it didn't go up proportionally, it's well beyond that. So I worry about, you know, the fact that what ought to be really, you know, a complimentary slide, which I've asked for before and a couple of times you all have displayed that, is the, is the rate of hospitalizations, which is a key issue. And probably more for the state of Oregon than any other state in this country. And so yet Tuesday and today, there is no chart that shows the hospitalization. And I think while this slide is valuable, it also can be used or misinterpreted in some ways. And I had a little bit of concern about that. So I would, unless there's a reason, is there a reason that we're no longer, you know, last couple of weeks, we have been displaying the hospitalization rates? Is there a reason we're not doing that anymore?
No, not a reason. I think we're just trying to provide a variety of different information. I'll certainly assure that it's shared next week.
Okay. I mean, it seems to be all over the, all over the media around the country. And it just seems that, you know, that is what I have, you know, it's driven a lot of my, my thoughts and decisions and communications. I've really been basing that a lot. And I think the other thing that is really, that really, what's the right word here? Highlights, if you will, the, why it's such a critical thing is that Oregon has the lowest hospital beds per capita in the country. Someone can go on the search engine, any search engine, just look up hospital capacity per capita by state, and then you'll find that, that Oregon is the lowest in the country. And if you look at other states which are bigger than Oregon and smaller than Oregon, you know, you'll see small states like Montana that have twice as much hospital capacity per capita than we do, and states like in the East Coast, like New York and New Jersey that have a heck of a lot more. In some cases, there are states out there that have three times the hospital rate per capita or hospital beds per capita. So I think it really points out that I think the driver should be for a lot of people, or the messaging for a lot of people is really the precarious position we are all in, in Oregon with regards to the lowest proportion of hospital beds per capita. So that's why I think that chart would be, again, the chart that you're, it sounds like you are willing to put back up next week is so important, that we are in a, again, a more precarious position than any other state. And as I look at all the numbers and competing numbers with different interests, trying to argue this or that, I think at the end of the day, that is one that's hard to deny and it is compelling. So that is my, that's my comments for that. So I have a question for Nancy in regard to the CARES Act dollars and the businesses, the hundred-some-odd businesses you mentioning. Do we have a breakdown of the business types that have applied?
I don't know. I don't have that with me. I do know, like I said, the childcare is broken out. But I don't have any other breakouts on that. And I will check with BCS to see how they're tracking that.
Okay, the reason I ask is that, you know, we've heard from different business owners of different business types about their concerns. And the way the OHA and the governor, governor's orders, if you will, executive order, has impacted some businesses more substantially than others. And not, in a negative way. And some of them had literally been shut down. And we have heard from a lot of them. So I would hope, and I'd like to see maybe the list of businesses to make sure that we're covering some business types that have been the hardest hit.
Yes. I'm sorry, we, I just found out that we can do that and we can get that to you.
Okay. Yeah, I would say that the ones we probably heard the most from that have said, we haven't had any outbreaks, we haven't had any cases, and yet we're being unfairly or unduly disproportionately punished. And gyms and healthcare type facilities like that, that do training and so forth. And that's, that's obviously sometimes prescribed by, by doctors and health practitioners as a means to stay healthy. And so when we take away some of those facilities that offer, really offer those services to stay healthy, it seems as though we are, you know, we're kind of, I won't say conflicted, but it doesn't seem to make some sense. I get the fact that people working out will, are breathing heavily sometimes, they're getting their cardio up, I get that. And ventilation is a huge issue. But also square footage in those kinds of buildings is also a big issue. And some of them are rather large, which I think can actually perform and perform safely in this environment. But yet they're not allowed to open period. So I would again like to see that breakdown of businesses and see.
Commissioner?
That concludes my comments.
Commissioner, I also do have the hospital graph, if you want me to bring that up quickly.
You're on mute.
You're on mute.
Yeah, it's not for my benefit per se. I think it's primarily to message out there so people can see what we're up against.
So yeah, here's what, I don't know Philip, if you want to talk about that, but this is actually 12/9, we had 580 COVID patients. But you'll see, we are, we had a dip and then we're coming back up. And this is hospitalizations. Here we have those that were on, or in ICU beds. And I did talk a little bit on Tuesday about ICU capacity here in our region. And as of Tuesday, we had only, in our, which region won, again, is Clackamas, Multnomah County, Washington, Columbia, Clatsop, and Tillamook. We only had 59 ICU beds available, which of course does change day by day, but I don't think that that has increased. And this is how many we, of course, we have on ventilators. And we still have over 700 ventilators statewide. So where we're really seeing a shortage is with our ICU beds. So I don't know Philip, do you want to talk about anything else on this graph?
I think that's well done. I don't have anything else to add.
Okay.
Yeah, the other one I kind of pointed out before on this graph, especially when we see down, if there is a way maybe to display, it's kind of morbid, and I apologize. But someone who worked in a hospital before where, you know, one day you have a patient and the patient passed overnight, and then that bed is empty. And that is that when we have averaging, what, last few days here, we've had, you know, 20, 30 people a day dying in Oregon. So that brings those, that opens up beds momentarily, and then they're filled. So that graph, even this graph is somewhat misleading in the sense that we're not calculating in the beds that are emptied by virtue of people passing away. And it's a sad, it's a very sad thought, but I think it's important.
No, that's absolutely true. And then, and just for everyone too, we have the hospital bed capacity piece here too. And you can look at each region here. So for those in the audience, this is on our OHA webpage. And just go to the COVID page and you'll be able to look at this, different regions and what's available. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Sonia?
A quick question. You know, we have 700 ventilators statewide.
A quick question, you know, we have 700 ventilators statewide, but our region has 59 approximately ICU beds. So, when people need ventilators, do they not need those in ICU? I mean, I know there are more regions in the state, and there are more beds statewide, but I was just curious about that. Seems like we have more ventilators than ICU beds.
So, yeah, if you're in ICU bed with COVID, you don't necessarily need a ventilator, you could be there for other severities. And, yeah, I, I don't know, Philip, there's, but yeah, statewide, we, right now, we do have several ventilators.
More ventilators than beds.
Absolutely, yeah.
And the bed capacity is really around, not the actual physical bed and the, the equipment, it's around the staffing right now in our region.
Got it, that makes a lot of sense.
For being able to open up beds.
Yeah, and I just want to second what Paul was saying, and I really hope we are somehow able to prioritize those businesses that have been hurt by this shutdown. I mean, it's restaurants that can't do indoor dining, and a lot of, you know, fitness type of activities which are shut down. It's really, really hurting, and I think we're, I've been hearing from folks a lot, Paul's hearing, I, I'm guessing, Jim, you're probably nodding, you've heard from folks, and I know, I'm pretty sure Ken has as well. That's a real struggle when you, you know, you're just barely recovering from the last shutdown, and then, and then you're to take out only, and that's really tough. We're gonna, don't want to see us lose some of our really wonderful, precious restaurants, especially our local, our, our smaller restaurants that are, they're not the big chains that can withstand this more easily. So, I'm concerned about that. So, I just want to second what Paul was saying, hopefully you can prioritize those businesses.
All right, Gary, I don't see any other questions.
Okay, just Nancy, I'll ask you and Laura, once you have finalized, how are you going to distribute those business funds? We need to loop back to the board, so they're in the know, we've got some good feedback from them today.
Yeah, I will, I'll work with Laura on that and see what MISO can get to us, and hopefully it'll be maybe today or tomorrow. But I will let you know for sure after I speak with Laura.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, thank you, Nancy and Philip, for your presentations. We'll move on then, Chair, to the consent agenda, and Christina can read that.
So, our consent agenda for today, health, housing and human services. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Gladstone School District for the Food Pantry Program. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Water Environmental Services, or Environment Services, excuse me. Approval of Amendment Number 12 to Intergovernmental Agreement 159159 with the State of Oregon acting by and through its Oregon Health Authority for the operation and financing of community mental health addiction treatment, recovery and prevent, prevention services and problem gambling programs. Approval of intergovernmental agreement with Multnomah County for psychiatric consultation services. Approval of intergovernmental agreement with Clackamas County District Attorney's Office for legal support, or legal assistance to support mutual clients in the Adult Drug Court Program. Under Department of Transportation and Development, approval of a resolution declaring the public necessity and purpose of acquisition of rights of way easements and fee property for the South End Road at Myopost 3.8 project and authorizing good faith negotiations and condemnation actions. Approval of a contract with PBS Engineering and Environmental Incorporated for the Redland Road Turn Lanes at Ferguson and Bradley Project. Approval of a governmental, or government addendum with Kaiser Creek Project Manage, Manager LLC for the Oregon Community Solar Program, Kaiser Creek Solar Project. Approval of a government addendum with Kaiser Creek Project Manager LLC for the Oregon Community Solar Program, Sandy River Solar Project. Approval of our government addendum with Kaiser Creek Project Manage, or LLC for the Oregon Community Solar Program, Dunn Project. Approval of a government addendum with Kaiser Creek Project Manager LLC for the Oregon Community Solar Program, Mount Hope Project. Approval of a personal services contract with Harper Hoof Peterson Rahelis Incorporated to provide Monroe Street improvements for the development agency. Under Business and Community Services, approval of a local grant agreement between Clackamas County and Micro Enterprise Services of Oregon for MISO to provide a small grants program on behalf of Clackamas County in an effort to support the local business and childcare provider community impacted by COVID-19 pandemic. Under Juvenile Department, approval of amendment to an intergovernmental agreement with Oregon Health Authority for Behavioral Rehabilitation Services reimbursements. Under Disaster Management, approval to apply for fiscal year 2020 Emergency Management Performance Grant between Clackamas County and the State of Oregon. Approval of a letter of proclamation extending the proclamation date from March 31st, 2021 to March 31st, 2022. North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District, Amendment Number Two to the Cooperative Intergovernmental Agreement between the City of Milwaukee and the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District. Under Water Environment Services, approval of an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Gladstone and Water Environmental Services pertaining to the Joint Collection System Work. And approval of contract between Water Environment Services and Hack Company to provide flow meters. And that is your consent agenda.
Thank you, do any commissioners want to remove or pull an item from the consent agenda?
Yes, I do.
Okay, which item?
I'd like to pull under Roman numeral one, number two, as it relates to Water Environmental Services and our Health and Housing Services. And under, under Roman numeral, the NCPR, well, I'm going to say, the NCPRD and the West Environmental Services for discussion.
Okay.
And I'll, for the remainder of the agenda, consent agenda.
Ken, what'd you say?
I was moving to approve the amended consent agenda. I think Paul and I tried to do it at the same time.
Okay, second.
Okay, it's been moved, and, and second, to approve the amended consent agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Sheriff Fisher actually has her hand up.
Oh, you do?
Yeah, can you not see me? That's all right. I just wanted to mention on this consent agenda, there is an item. I'm not finding it, of course. Oh, it's A5, and it says that it is approval of intergovernmental agreement of Clackamas County District Attorney's Office for Legal Assistance to support mutual clients in the adult drug, adult program. That caught my eye, because the District Attorney's Office does not have clients, they have defendants. And so, I was concerned about there being a potential conflict. But I talked to District Attorney-elect John Wentworth, and he confirmed that it's not clients. That actually should have been worded to say participants, so there isn't a concern about potential conflicts of us providing legal assistance services to participants in the drug program. But that being said, I just wanted to state it, to put it on the record, I don't think we need to pull it. I just want to make sure that that is stated.
All right, Christina, please poll us.
All right, Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Humbertson?
Aye.
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
And Chair Bernard?
Aye, motion carries for zero. Okay, so, and then we're on to the discussion of the items that were pulled.
Yeah, this question might, actually, I'm not sure who can answer it, it's either for the administrator, or it's for legal counsel. So, under Health and Housing Services, Roman numeral one there, number two, it relates to a IGA or contract with Water Environmental Services, is that correct? Christina, could you put that up, please? I'm just curious as to why, two, two questions, why there's not a corresponding approval under Wes for the same, for the same activity, right? So, if it requires consent approval for an agreement, why would we not have the same corresponding activity and approval under Wes? That's question number one. And question number two, Wes is, is a department comprised of three districts. And it, it should be, frankly, for the sake of the district, identify which district is, is being affected by this agreement. It's not, it's not identified.
You're correct, Commissioner Savas, it should have a dual approval, both by Wes and by the board acting on behalf of H3S. It should. In terms of the content, I do not know, I have not reviewed this IGA.
Okay, and similarly, on the same vein, that, under, underwater environmental services, it does not, we're not, it's not a convening of the district that's impacted by those approvals.
Well, Wes is the 190, if you recall.
Wes is a 190, but when does the district actually approve it? We don't care about the district? The, the district doesn't have, has no autonomy, or is this, it just, is it just some thing out there? It, it's not overridden by a ORS 190. The activity and responsibility still lies for each of those districts. They exist today, they have autonomy, but the autonomy's not being recognized.
I'm not familiar with this particular arrangement, you might want to pull it and have a conversation with Greg Geist.
I'm not here to pull it, I'm really talking about, as a point of order, I'm, I'm really talking about how we do business with our districts, and how we should be doing business with our districts. It's an issue I've been raising for a number of years, and it continues to be ignored, in my opinion. I, I say that respectfully, and I, I, I also have found it troubling, frankly, and I continue to find it troubling, that, that we are doing this, it's not clear, we're doing this as a Board of County Commissioners. It's not really clear, even though you can title it under Wes, or you can title it under NCPRD. But really, we're really not, we're really not convening, we're not even, right now, even discussing this. Which hat are we wearing right now? Are we wearing the hat of county commissioners, or are we wearing the hat of which districts, or the Parks District, or whichever it may be? I, I, I think the fact that the board and ourselves are not really taking into, into consideration the district itself, or districts themselves, that we're not really, this is not very clean, in my opinion. So, that's, and, and so, when, we have legal counsel here, we do the consent agenda, and you're responding, Mr. Magcor. Are, are you responding on behalf of the county or the district?
I'm responding right now on behalf of the county.
Okay, thank you. So, I want to shift over to NCPRD, same issue there, as far as identifying that we are convening as a district or not. And I also want to just say, putting that aside, that I just want to just point out, I'm, I'm a, want to thank everyone involved in the bylaws in the City of Milwaukee for approving the amendment, all the hard work that staff has done, both here at, here at the county, here at the district, and, and also at Milwaukee, and all the citizens who played a role in that. So, I just want to acknowledge their hard work. With that, I think I've made my point, and I move approval of the remaining items on the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the remaining items on the consent agenda, it might be helpful to, what are the numbers? Just to be clean, what are the numbers?
Well, if we want to, want to, want to be clean, I suppose we can convene ourselves as, as each of those. But under number one, that was Health and Human, Health and Housing Human Services. So, under the Board of County Commissioners, I move approval of item one, number two. Roman numeral one, item two.
Second.
It's been moved in second to move approval of item one and two. Any further discussion?
So, I just have a question, so Stephen Paul raised us some really good points. What should our process be moving forward, given his stated concern?
Well, for the consent agenda, what you could do is recess as the board, convene as NCPRD, approve the consent agenda, adjourn as the board for NCPRD, reconvene as the board, and wrap it up for consent agenda. Typically, for regular board items, whether it's a housing authority, you do recess as the BCC and convene as the housing authority. It seems like it does get merged in the consent agenda. But no doubt, the IGA between Wes and H3S should have dueling approvals, one under H3S and one under Wes itself.
Today, we're approving the one that's signed by Rich, or requested by Rich Swift for H3S, and so that would be for the county, our county hat.
That's correct, but my understanding is Commissioner Savas had that one pulled, and that the board approved the amended consent agenda.
Okay.
Yeah, so just point of order, my motion was to approve Roman numeral one, item two, health and, under Health and Housing, Human Services, that agreement. So, that would be convened properly under the Board of County Commissioners as we are at this moment. So, therefore, please call the roll.
Now, let me ask that, so Christina, please poll the commission.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Humbertson?
Aye.
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
Chair Bernard?
Aye, motion carries unanimously, the next item was item.
I believe, without having the consent agenda in front of me, was that Roman numeral two?
Roman numeral two, item one.
Item one.
So, we should convene as Wes in this particular one, or NCPRD?
NCPRD.
All right, well, adjourn as the Board of County Commissioners.
We'll just recess as the board chair.
Pardon?
We'll recess as the board.
I'll recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as NCPRD board for this item, and entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve approval of item Roman numeral two, number one, NCPRD.
Second.
It's removed in second, that we approve item Roman numeral two, NCPRD, and any further discussion? Christina, please poll us.
My, I'm mute, oh, Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Humbertson?
Aye.
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
Chair Bernard?
Aye, motion carries, with that, we will adjourn as NCPRD and convene as the Board of County Commissioners for the remainder of the meeting, and Gary, what's up next?
Mr. Chair, point of order.
Yeah.
We need to approve the Wes items.
I thought we already did.
Roman numeral three, one and two.
Okay, all right, so we will adjourn as the Board of County Commissioners, convene as the Wes board for this next item. And, so, what's the item number, entertain a motion.
Point of order, Mr. Magcor, Mr. Schmidt, could you tell us which districts were, are affected by this?
I do not know, I don't have it in front of me.
I, I knew we'd defer this to next week.
Yeah, I'll second that, but we don't need to do that, actually, if we don't vote on it. So, all right, so we'll just get further details on this for next week's agenda, okay? So, again, I will adjourn as the Board, ask the Wes, and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners for the remainder of this item, I mean, this agenda. And up next is public communication, and Christina will moderate this portion, Christina?
Thank you, Chair. I'll be coordinating public comment for the specific, specific public hearing. If anyone would like to give comment, please hit, raise your hand on Zoom, or press star nine if you're by calling in by phone. I will give people a few seconds to do that, I do have one email. So, I will just go ahead and read that email, I'm not seeing any hands. The email is from Dan Berg. This is in reference to 19630 South McCord Road in Oregon City, which I purchased in June of 2018. I am now in receipt of a certified site.
in receipt of a certified citation letter dated December 2nd, 2020 from Andrea Hall and Code Enforcement regarding a permit issue. I've received on several occasions emails from Andrea Hall saying that there were no permits and then saying she found permits and mixing up information to the point of confusion. As with each of those letters I received, I responded both in email and phone messages requesting a list and clarification of the issues. I've yet to receive any return calls or emails other than a brief phone call discussion and a few confusing emails, but without a detailed written explanation of the code violations and specifics. The property has a house and cottage built in the 1930s before zoning and a shop. I've been working and continued work with multiple agencies to connect to the sewer for the directions of Clackamas County Departments, which has issued the appropriate uh, permits for the sewer and water. The electrical permits for the house and cottage were updated February 18th, 2000 according to PGE Records, permit number E0079300. I believe this is a matching permit. Per PGE Records show in December 2014 permits for the shop. Action requested. I'm requesting a, and need a detailed list of the supposed violations and code numbers for my property at 19630 South McCord Road in Oregon City, so that I may respond to them. I've been working with several different departments at the county, uh, city and metro, state levels, and I'm sure what the issues are so that I may continue working without county resolving any issues. I'm once again requesting clarification of these issues so that I may respond to them. It has been difficult progress without the specifics. I have in the past and do currently work with all Clackamas County Departments without problems. However, there seems to be an issue in communication between Andrea Hall and myself. I'm requesting that a new independent person is assigned to the project in hopes of clearing up the issues. Along with the problems encountered with the COVID-19 virus, wildfires, shutdown, evacuations, closing of suppliers, and finding contractors and laborers to do the work. I would like to move forward in solving any problems or issues as soon as possible. And number two, I'm requesting that administrative citation be put on hold for 30 days and miscommunication corrected as we've been working to solve the problem. Also, I get the information I have exchanged and coordinated with the county departments. Thank you for attention to this matter, Dan Berg.
Thank you. Any, any hands up? Don't, doesn't look like it.
Don't see any hands up, and I don't have any more emails.
All right, great. Thank you. We'll end that portion and move on to county administrator updates.
Uh, thank you, Chair.
Before we move on, I just want to just ask Gary for the last, um, for Mr. Berg's um, request. I'm assuming we're going to put that through and follow up and get an answer to him.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Yes. Uh, two pieces of good news to share with you commissioners this week. First, the President of Oregon External Affairs for AT&amp;T of Oregon wrote to me, uh, thanking our, uh, Clackamas County and providing AT&amp;T's gratitude and appreciation for the exceptional staff of Clackamas County that make it possible for AT&amp;T to improve wireless services in the communities we serve. In particular, the, uh, letter recognized our transportation and development staff who guided AT&amp;T through a permitting process and land use application process for the company's projects. Uh, the letter recognized Richard Carlson, Doug Rudazell, Richard Nyes, and Glenn Hamburg of our transportation staff for their professionalism, responsiveness, and guidance. So I thank them as well, and thank you to AT&amp;T for that very gracious letter. Next, our emergency operations staff received some recognition uh, from a member of the public who wrote, "Thank you very much for your information, especially regarding ICU bed availability information in our region. I am pleased to know there are Clackamas County government employees who are responsive to the citizenry. And at a recent Metro Wildfire Economic Recovery Team meeting, which is led by the governor, governor's office, a business representative responded that they are grateful for Clackamas County's dynamic website for providing updated information during the wildfires. This business representative said that while there was a lot of confusing information out in the public, our county website was reliable and very helpful. So thank you to our emergency operations center staff and public and government affairs for that communication. Uh, finally, commissioners, next week is your last week of business for the calendar year. Your business meeting on December 17th will be conducted in person and remote. So members of the public are invited to attend in person, but we will have to limit the numbers of the public in the room at one time. So we will have an overflow room if we do have a lot of public who choose to attend." Uh, that is my update for today. Thank you.
Move on to commissioner communication, and Sonya, you're up first.
Mr. Chair, this is such an interesting time with, um, the holidays upon us and being in the midst of COVID, it's just a bit surreal. I, um, really appreciate how hard our staff have been working and keeping us updated and how hard all of, us as a commission have been working to be responsive to community concerns. I am really looking forward to our listening session, which is this afternoon. I think it will give us some good, really good information. And Gary, I just want to thank you for facilitating the, um, connection with us and those cares dollars and, and having that, that loop that we are having input because the turnaround time is very, very fast. So those are the things that are on my mind that I do want to mention. I participated in a, um, county training yesterday. It was mindful communication. And it was excellent. I've been, had the privilege of doing a lot of different trainings on mindfulness, especially as an attorney, that's a, um, a big hot topic for lawyers to be mindful. But I tell you, that training on mindful communication was, um, through our county trainer was great. A lot of, you know, just doing a body scan, seeing how you feel when you're in a conversation. They put categories of red, yellow, green, and gave strategies on how to communicate effectively and intentionally. I, uh, really, really enjoyed it. So Gary, again, we're doing great stuff. And I just want to share that with my colleagues. I don't know if that training is going to be available for those that didn't sign up. But I want to encourage my colleagues, take advantage of our countywide training. It is excellent. So, that's all I have for today.
Thank you, Paul.
Yeah, um, yes, speaking of that, Commissioner Fisher, I appreciate that. I think on Saturday, we're having a, a training session as well. I hope that, um, uh, we are all going to be all participating in that PSU, um, training Saturday morning for what's like four hour, four or so hours. Um, uh, what I wanted to, um, build on was our discussion last week with regards to, um, you know, the issue with our quality of life and falling deep into poverty and affordability going farther away. And, um, following my comments, I believe, uh, my colleagues had brought up the minimum wage of $7 an hour. Um, and that, uh, the way to, um, to, uh, perhaps, or suggested that perhaps the way to remedy, poverty was to raise the minimum wage. Well, you know, of course, the minimum wage in Oregon as of 2021, I believe, is 1325, um, not $7 an hour. But, you know, I, I did, uh, I did some data searching. I'm going to share a screen here. Um, if you can all just give me a moment. I'm not going to be able to do it, so I will, I will actually pass on that. But it shows what I did, I, I looked around and did just some comparisons and I compared, um, uh, Oregon and Washington, I compared Clark County and Maldoma County and other counties that did the comparison. And I found it very interesting that, um, Clark County across the river, Clark County, Washington State, um, their poverty rate is half of that of, pertinence of, um, Maldoma County. They're at 9.2% poverty rate. Their average house, the average median house sale are, um, is, is about $100,000 less. Uh, in some cases, uh, more than that, less than is in Maldoma County. And, um, uh, and, and of course, that's, and their minimum wage actually is 1350 an hour. It's actually 25 cents an hour, and, and back, it goes the years back. They implemented an increase in the minimum wage. So when we compare ourselves, and I was trying to point out the issue with, I think our land use policies, um, and a number of other policies are putting a burden on a lot of people and, and frankly, forcing a lot of people out of their homes, can't afford to live, and they're out on the street, and that is, that is the issue. I've brought up issues about displacement. I've brought up issues about migration. I, I brought up issues about, you know, frankly, just people that are on the street that are homeless. So it's, it's, you know, it's more than the minimum wage. Um, people that are seniors, um, uh, are, are probably not going to be able to work, go to work, get a job. And, you know, if you're 75, 80 years old, raising the minimum wage does not make your rent cheaper. And we have a high percentage of population in this county that are senior citizens. And of course, most of them are retired. They're living on, on a, a modest means. Um, and a lot of those are being forced to move somewhere else because they can't afford the rents. Uh, five years ago, um, just in the area that I live, you know, uh, rents have doubled. And some people could not simply afford that, and that is, that's been my concern. So I'm looking forward to our conversation next week on displacement as we scratch the surface on this very complex topic. But again, I, I think that we have to, we have to look at the data. We have to have the data available. And I, and our, I think our handicap is, is really not having really that type of analysis, that type of data to base our decisions on. And we make good decisions based on good information. When we have a, uh, when we are, I won't say arguing, but we're throwing out numbers and we're competing, it seems. Um, um, you know, I, I, I think we should have a baseline of data that, that, um, to base our decisions on when it comes to land use and, and virtually everything we do. We need good data. We need good information, and that's what I'm trying to strive for. Um, so I, I, I would appreciate that. The other fat factor in there is not as simple as a minimum wage, obviously. There's tax policy. If you look at tax policy in the state of Washington, it's far different than it is here in Oregon. So I encourage you all to kind of look at the data, induce some comparisons of other counties. Um, west coast, you know, um, other states, other counties. And you'll find, you'll find that the poverty rate in areas that have high, high, um, um, high minimum wage, a higher minimum wage than, than the federal rate of $7 an hour have as much or more, more poverty than, than other states. And the housing costs are considerably higher in those states as well. Uh, that concludes my comments for today. Thank you.
Ken?
No comment.
All right, well, uh, I hope everyone takes care, stays healthy, wears your mask, wash your hands, stay away, if you're sick, stay home. Um, we've got a bridge we have to cross, and it's, uh, it's a ways out there. So that's really all I have to say. Thank you, and we are adjourned.